Call the Brimfield Township Board of Trustees Public Hearing to Order at 7:30 a.m. Roll call for attendance. Sue?
Present.
Nick is present, Mike is absent. All right, we are here for a public hearing on proposed text amendments to Section 510, that's 07 driveways. New text is shown in red. I'm going to turn this over to Mike Ladd, our Economic and Zoning Development Manager. Mike, where is yours? Give us an update on this.
Yep, so this section is 510.07 driveways. We're adding a minimum 12-inch diameter culvert pipe or high-density or SDR 35 concrete or material approved by the road superintendent. And then we also added design specifications to the standard for apartment and multifamily residences and non-residents, you use driveways and parking requirements. So the stuff in red on there is the changes. This is out of request of the road superintendent to put that minimum in there for houses, not in developments, but on individual lots because a lot of them are coming in with small pipes and then they have to argue to get it to at least a minimum of 12 inches.
So are there separate rules for driveways in developments then?
Yeah, it follows Porch County subdivision regulations.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to say that.
We don't have to.
So this is more for the ditches?
Yep.
Okay. This is public hearing, so we're here to hear public comments on it. As of right now, we have nobody signed up to speak, but I will open it up again for anybody who wants to speak on this specific topic. Yes?
New construction.
No, great question, thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to end the public hearing.
So move.
I will second. Roll call, Sue?
Yes.
Nick, yes, meeting adjourned at 7:32. We'll be back at 7:40 for our next public hearing. All right, welcome everyone. It is 7:40 a.m. I'd like to call the Brimfield Township Board of Trustees Public Hearing to Order. Roll call for attendance. Sue?
Present.
Nick, present. Mike is absent. We are here to discuss amendments to Section 311.02, D as in boy, and Appendix E as in Edward. This time I'd like to turn this over to zoning and economic director Mike Ladd for an update on this, and then we'll have public comments.
Yeah, thank you. So this is in regards to the integrated commercial district. They didn't, they had some of the sections like hotels, convention centers, and conference centers were listed in the purpose of the code. So if you look at 311.01, it actually talks about professional offices, hotels, convention centers, conference centers, as well as high residential developments. That's the purpose of the district. But then when you get into the body of the district and the uses, it wasn't listed. So, and then you go to, back to the appendix, it wasn't listed. So we're like, okay, we need to clean that up because if we're saying it's the purpose, it should be as the uses. So just a housekeeping matter.
All right, and so this is the public's opportunity to speak on this specific topic of this amendment change. So we will open up the floor. We have no signatures right now, but I'll open up the floor to public comment for the board to consider before the vote or discussions at the end of the hearing. Any comments? Looking at you, Chip.
I want to do a little bit of the other housing to the last department. Okay, that'll work.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah, I just appreciate it. I appreciate it that going over this book, which has been around for years and years, that we're able to go through these and update it and find things that need to be corrected to make it more consistent, make it more explainable so when people read it, they can understand it better. You know, sometimes you change your language just so that you can better understand because it gets very involved in all of our paperwork and our rules and legislation. So anyway, yeah, that's good that we've caught that.
Hearing no other comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So move.
I will second. Roll call, Sue? Roll call?
I'm here.
For voting for you, my first one.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, yes, we're voting.
And I'm a yes also, so meeting adjourned at 7:43.
Yeah.
All right, we'll be back.
I'd like to call the Brimfield Township Board of Trustees Meeting to order. Can we have roll call for attendance, please?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, we have full form. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Pass it.
Heavenly Father, we're, uh, we're in the middle of winter season now, Lord, and we just thank you that thus far you've kept the roads fairly clean for us and safe. We thank you for the road crew out there doing their due diligence and keeping our community safe. And just pray, Lord, you just help us get through this winter month. So pray, Lord, you be with the fire and police as well. They've gotta get out in the same weather and try to meet the needs of the emergencies and the elderly and the sick. And just pray that you keep them, uh, keep them safe and healthy as well. And, Lord, as we enter into this business meeting, we know there's a lot of responsibility on the, on the department heads that are represented here. And, and, Lord, we just pray that each and every day you give them the wisdom to make the right decisions, the discernment. Uh, Lord, I know it's gotta be hard with a lot of pressure, and sometimes, Lord, the pressure keeps us honest. I just pray, God, that you just, uh, just be with each one of them, Lord, that they would make the best decisions they can for the good of Brimfield. We ask your blessing upon this meeting today. Let everything that's said and done bring honor and glory to you. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, we'll start with announcements and correspondences. I'll open up the, what are announcements, correspondences?
Well, I got a quick announcement. Uh, I just want everyone to know that this will be my last meeting. I, uh, will not be here for the next one. I got a big family adventure coming up and so there's no point in me being one. I've appreciated working with so many of you. Uh, it's been a worthwhile twenty-four years. Went by in a flash. There's a lot of people I'll never forget, that's for sure. But there's a lot of people I'll definitely remember with all, how much you all helped us, you know, chick spraying and, you know, just a lot of these people, you know, you know, that really made this township and helped build these jets and put all these things in places that a lot of people complain about, but they complain if they get their taxes raised because we don't have those things. But, you know, those of us that actually know what's going on know the benefit that these future boards will, will get because of our sacrifice. Thank you, Sue, because you were a big part of that.
I'm gonna miss you.
We, I will still see you. I go from being Mike from Brimfield Township to Mike from Mike's Place again. I like that title.
Okay, that'll be good.
It's all good. And with my son taking over everything, now he can chase his father around the restaurant and make sure I'm not doing anything stupid. And Shirley, Shirley, thank you for everything. And Patty, you know, without Shirley, my confidante, you know, I've given her some crazy stories. So, but I look forward to talking to her and all you guys, you know, the people I wanna talk to. I'll definitely still keep in touch, but I'll still be around. Come up to Mike's place and have a cup of coffee with the old man, but I'm not playing Santa. So, okay. Well, thank you all. So.
Thank you, Mike, for your years of service to the community. I appreciate it. And enjoy retirement slash, uh, relaxation time.
Amen.
Could we have a letter written from our board to Mike?
No, no, I don't want any letters. Just something else I can put in the shredder. No, 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 don't you even waste your time.
Roll set's on the floor.
Yeah, no, no. I got my kids', my grandkids' drawings on my refrigerator, so there's no more room for... Remember, grandkids are where it's all about. And kids, family, family is so important.
Amen to that, that's for sure.
Yep.
Okay, um, meeting guests, we have no scheduled meeting guests today, so we'll move into meeting minutes. And I'll entertain a motion for the October twenty-ninth regular meeting.
So moved.
And we'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call for approval.
All right, Mike?
Sting.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll entertain a motion for the eleven-twelve twenty-twenty-five regular meeting.
So moved.
Mike, can you say, I was, uh, oh, I was at that one. I'll second that one. Roll call for approval.
Mike?
I'm Sting.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And then I'll entertain a motion for the eleven-twenty-five twenty-twenty-five meeting.
So moved.
Mike, can you second?
Yeah, I'll second that one.
Uh, roll call for approval.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Uh, Nick, uh, Sting.
Motion passed.
And I'll entertain a motion, um, to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second for discussion. Um, can we add under administration, uh, new business updates, number two, building project? Actually, I'm sorry, let's put that under old business. So, building projects will be under old business updates. And then under new business, number two, will be Tomage Brimfield jet updates. Are there any other changes?
I have one item to add as well. Uh, one item under new business report approval from the police department, I need to add acceptance of a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation from Mike and Deb Kostanski to the BPD shop at the Cop Program.
Okay, and... Any other changes? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote for the, uh, amended meeting agenda.
Mike?
Um, yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept the purchase orders as presented.
So moved.
I'll second. Roll call.
Mike?
I'm Sting.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Pass.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept the warrants as presented.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mike?
I'm Sting.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now, before we get to public comments, I wanna go back to these minutes. In November the twelfth, I was on vacation, so I would have to abstain because I wasn't here for that meeting. So you may have to make a change somewhere. Correct that.
Yep, so we'll bring that back up. Um, I need a motion to approve, to reapprove the eleven-twelve twenty-twenty-five meeting minutes.
So moved.
And I'll second. Roll call.
Mike?
I still not, have not read them, so I cannot approve one.
You just wanna table down?
Table them.
All right, so let's table those meeting minutes. So, uh, motion fails and it'll be tabled. All right, we're now moving to public comment. We wanna remind everyone that we have a three-minute limit per person. We do thank you in advance for being here. We have a sign-up sheet if you would like to speak. Um, we have Holly Kostanski will be up first. If anybody else wants to speak afterwards, the sign-up sheet's here.
Hi, everybody. Good morning. Sorry, I gotta pull up my notes because I was a little nervous, so I wrote it down.
You're supposed to be working at the...
It's too early for that. Dad, I just wanted to come up here and congratulate you on twenty-four years as a trustee, as well as on your retirement. Twenty-four years means that I have known you as a trustee basically my entire life. And I didn't quite understand what a trustee was in elementary school, and something my friends will not let me live down, is that I would tell everybody you were the president of Brimfield. Um, but now, as somebody who has watched you dedicate this amount of time to our community, you have taught me that no matter the negative nor positive reaction, that it is about doing what is the best for the community. And one more main thing that I have taken away from your time as a trustee is that no matter what you do, you will not be able to make everybody happy. You, um, but what matters is that you are trying your best and to not give up when life gets hard. I also wanted to congratulate Kevin Scott on your elected position. I also wanted to congratulate Jasmine and Nick as well. And I wanted to wish a good luck to Cassie on your next adventure. And Dad, I just wanted to thank you for being the role model that you are. And I am so proud to call you my father. No, I hope you enjoy your well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
You won't have to listen to me bitching anymore. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you. All right, one last call for public comments.
You're not announcing that you're running for election, are you? I have made sure all my kids stay out of politics. Chick, those years go so fast, don't they? Twenty-four years, wow.
Uh, I didn't really prepare, Holly. I'm Cody Kostanski. Um, I didn't really prepare anything. Uh, I just wanna say congrats, and you made me really proud. And no matter how much complaining and all this Facebook stuff you see, because it's brutal, and both the mics know, just drive around Brimfield. Everyone wants to move here. The population has boomed. Like, I can go to Dollar General a minute down the street. I can go to car washes. It's like, there's so much here now, and everyone wants to move here, but they complain that you've run Brimfield. You have not. You've made it such an amazing place. I've loved growing up here. I've been here thirty years, and it's just been awesome. The neighbors are amazing. People are amazing. So, don't get caught up in the small things. Just take a drive around and see what you did. So, good job.
It is. I remember when we had to drive all the way to Chapel Hill, remember? We had nothing to, no stores there.
We didn't even have a McDonald's.
No McDonald's.
No McDonald's at that time, yep.
Yeah. I think it all happened when Mike's place came into the area.
It did.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I'm not.
Thank you, thank you, kids. Glad you didn't bring your mother. I'm a professional babysitter now. No, it's not a babysitter. I'm watching, spending time with my grandkids.
All right, last call for public comments. Hearing none, we'll move on to the safety portion. Any safety concerns? All right, hearing none, we'll move into the business portion of our meeting. Uh, we'll now turn it over to the police department. What is yours?
Yeah, thanks, Nick. Just a couple of items for the board this morning. I just wanna provide a little feedback on our Grinch Movie Night event we held last Friday at the, uh, event at Sunnybrook. Um, this is the second year in a row we've done the event there, uh, and it's been a great event both years. I think it's just gotten better, better the second year. We learned a couple lessons from year one. I just wanna thank everybody that participated in that event, helped us out, particularly to Mike's Place, to Joe Rapaski, to Mike and his family and the staff that helped with the food that day. Um, it took a collective effort, uh, to make that a success, so it was just a, just a great night. We ended up selling about a hundred-and-sixty-seven tickets for the event, probably raised around sixteen-hundred dollars, so I don't have the exact figure yet on what we took in on the piece, but overall, uh, just a great community event, and, uh, looking forward to putting that event on, uh, going forward as well. So I wanna extend my thank you to everybody who played a part in that. Uh, one other item attached to, uh, community events, we have Shop With A Cop coming up this Saturday. Uh, we are gonna be taking twenty-five kids shopping as part of that program. Uh, thank you in advance, Chief Lully, uh, with the fire department. We're gonna be doing our initial meeting with all of our kids here at the fire department, and there will be caravanning down to Walmart, uh, to take our kids shopping, so looking forward to that event as well. Under, uh, new business for board approval, I do need to ask for acceptance of a donation from our Brimfield Walmart of a television valued at two-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars to the Brimfield Police Department.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of a donation from Brimfield Walmart.
And I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I also need to get board approval for acceptance of a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar cash donation from Mike and Deb Kostanski to the Brimfield Police Department Shop With A Cop program.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept the BPD Shop With Cop program donation from Mike and Deb Kostanski.
Doctor.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Uh, roll call.
Mike?
I'm Sting.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Uh, thank you. Mike, thank you, thank you for that donation. It's, it's much appreciated, and I'm not gonna let you sneak away. Uh, I know I'll see you on Friday at our luncheon, but I wanna say on the record, it's been a pleasure working with you these last ten years. You've helped make my job easier. Uh, so it's been a, a partnership I valued and looking forward to your friendship as well going forward.
Yep, well, as long as my son tells me it's okay, we're gonna still partner with you. Mike's Place and the, and the Shop With A Cop, because that's a great program.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, much appreciated.
It's great seeing all the cops there and all the little kids running around.
Yeah. So, appreciate you.
Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate you, Roy.
That's all I had this morning.
Any questions for police department? Hearing none, we'll move into fire department. Chief, what is yours?
Okay, uh, mine is gonna be very quick. I just have one new business update. We do have our Santa on the fire truck gift delivery December twentieth and twenty-first coming up. Um, and, and information is on our Facebook page, on the fire department Facebook page. Um, and I just wanna remind everybody, since we're, we're speaking in public right now, that on the sixteenth is the cutoff, that is next Tuesday, that we'll cut off the gifts coming in, because we have to have a few days to organize everything, um, for delivery. Those dates are coming up quickly. So, um, look at the Facebook page, the flyer's up there. And, uh, if anybody wants to repost it, feel, feel free, but, um, that's what's coming up, and that's on our agenda. Other than that, we've just been running calls, so.
How are the gift donations coming in?
Uh, slow, slow. It's, they all come in. They all come in on Tuesday.
Okay.
I, I mean, we'll, we'll get a hundred people knock on the door on Tuesday, just the way it always goes, so. And Wednesday, that's why I'm saying cutoffs on Tuesday, so we can get going on that, so. And that's all I have.
Any questions for fire? Hearing none, we'll move into administration. Uh, we'll start with, uh, old business building project update, just to give the board an update and everyone an update on the building project. I did meet with, um, QCI and Rycon over the past two weeks. Um, I was made aware that our warrant, according to Rycon, they've started the warranty period on our building as of October first of twenty-twenty-three for the fireside, and December ninth of twenty-twenty-four for the administration side. Um, QCI is, talks with them, and so is Moody Nolan, because we believe that the contract states that the warranty period should not start until total handover of the building. Um, but Rycon is claiming we are now out of warranty on, on, uh, labor for both of those, because they were one-year warranties. So, there's a conversation that is happening. Uh, QCI also made me aware that Rycon is requesting a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars in additional payments in time, a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars in change orders, and Moody Nolan is seeking an additional a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in service fees, uh, with a total roughly around three-hundred-and-seventy thousand. Uh, QCI's position is that we are not responsible for all of that, we're responsible for a small portion of that, so they'll continue their negotiations with Rycon, um, and Moody Nolan. So it's kind of an update of where we're at. With that said, QCI, um, Bob Booth and Rycon's Pete will be on-site today at ten a.m. So, uh, I need a representative from administration and fire as we walk around on punch lists and warranty item discussions. I plan on being here for that. I know Craig is gonna try to be here too. Uh, board, if you're interested, they will both be on-site, um, today. Additionally, um, Rick Capone will be at our next board of trustees meeting on December twenty-second at eight a.m. to give a full update to the board on the status of potential cost recovery. So, that's an update of where we're at with the church project. Uh, what triggered this was, Craig, was you were having pump fire doors. We were trying to get some warranty work done. Uh, when we called the garage door company, they said they wouldn't come out because they haven't paid in eight months. Um, and they said, we don't know who owes us, but somebody owes us money. We're not coming out. We're not doing the warranty work. And that's what led us down that path. Um, we were trying to find the warranty information. We did find that in Holly's old office and some binders, and, um, Pete was able to provide us some documentation that it was turned over to, uh, Holly last year in December. Um, so we now have all that documentation, but it was not, to my knowledge, turned over to the board. So, we're trying to backtrack at this point. Any questions on that? All right, hearing none, we'll move into the next part. Um, Roy, you got an update?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to bring to the board, uh, for the board's consideration to, uh, consider adding Christmas Eve as a holiday for the admin staff. Um, that would, uh, be adding a holiday to what you originally approved at the beginning of the year. Uh, if you're looking for a frame of comparison for having like a twelfth holiday, I know the county recognizes a twelfth holiday, so you would, your approval of that would be in line with what the county has done as far as the holiday piece goes, but I wanted to bring that to the board as a request for the admin staff for that piece, for your consideration.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make that motion.
I'll second that for discussion. So we're currently at, uh, eleven holidays? Okay. I know we've done this before for Christmas Eve or the day after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I think each year you, as you, as a board, you guys have collectively discussed that and made decisions one way or another.
Thoughts? See you, Mike.
I don't know, I think Christmas Eve is... I don't know, I think Christmas Eve is, is as important as Christmas. Well, not as important, but I think it's a big time for family and stuff and I, I think it's probably not a bad idea.
I don't think many people are coming up there on Christmas Eve.
I won't. I don't know, I just, who do you think, Sue?
I don't want to be here on Christmas Eve.
What do you think, Jasmine?
Me either.
There is just so much work that you go into in preparing that big meal for the following day. And, and you're working on that two to three days before that and I just, I just need that time to do what all I have to do.
Well, we eat Chinese food on Christmas.
Do you?
That's what you're supposed to do.
Oh, well, that would make it simpler.
No.
Yeah.
My son's going to cook, right Cody? The master of the smoker.
And it's only, it's only for admin staff, it doesn't affect contractual employees, so.
What you got left of admin is pretty good.
Uh, I don't have a problem with it.
So, I think we're ready for a vote?
Agreed.
Yeah.
All right, roll call to close down on Christmas Eve as a holiday.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I have a quick update, we had our Talmage Brimfield JED board meeting. Mike Lad was with me in attendance at that meeting this past week on December third. Just a couple of updates for the board. We should be receiving a check in January for eight hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's our estimate payment in January two thousand and twenty-six. Looking at numbers, this is just the Brimfield Talmage JED numbers. Revenue from, net revenues from January through November of this year, there was a rate increase from one point seven five percent to two percent, so we're at that max percentage. We brought in total for the JED, three million eighty-five thousand dollars. So, we received half of that. The projections, based on the numbers that we have, the recommended estimate for two thousand and twenty-six that was approved is three million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what we anticipate. So, roughly a seven hundred thousand dollar increase in JED funding total. We would receive half of that money. We also did note that while we were up, the JED was up about eleven percent, there was a two point, point two five percent increase that, that brought us up to the two percent. So, even though we went up in the increase of percentage, bringing us up to two percent, the total money being brought in was a little bit lower than projected. So, that two percent basically gave us a little bit of buffer, we should have seen a higher increase. Mean payroll was down somewhere in there. We did see a one hundred and eighty thousand dollar refund check that we had to issue to one of the companies. We do, we are in discussions with legal with them right now. Talmage payroll tax is two point two five percent. The JED agreement says that we should match Talmages.
Yeah.
But that point two five percent is a special levy that they have for police and fire. So, the question is, can the JED collect that additional point two five? And if they did, does it just get distributed normally or would it have to go to police and fire? So, their legal department's reviewing it, because the payroll tax is two, but they're actually collecting it two point two five.
Yeah, when we put that JED together, I remember, we were just, we had to merit whatever the municipality has it. So, I'm just, I don't even know if Al Schrader still practices, but he would be the person you should call. Because Al Schrader wrote the JED with us.
Okay. Yeah, we're trying to figure that out, we just want to make sure we do it the correct way and it's because they put on a special levy fund essentially for police and fire.
Police and fire.
To go to that point two five. So, it doesn't, wouldn't it take, in fact, till two thousand and twenty-eight?
It might be worthwhile for you to call the guy that wrote it.
Al Schrader?
Al Schrader. Let's see, like four hundred bucks an hour? I don't know, he was, but he definitely knows the JEDs.
Okay.
Yep, I don't know how much Mark knows the JEDs. I mean, at least he knows the history of the JEDs. Who's the, who's the guy from Kent that we, that we worked with? Leo, Leo Steinbrenner, is that his name? Leo? Gosh, I can't even remember. Yeah, how much was our first JED check? Six hundred bucks?
Well, Talmage is a law director's with me, but I'll give him the Al Schrader piece too to look at, because we're just trying to figure that out before, we have some time, two thousand and twenty-eight, but that could be additional funding.
Yeah, just, it'd be a good resource for you guys to know his name. He was, he was older back then, I don't know, but, I don't know.
Well, you have like a big JED, you don't have an exaggeration.
With the hundred dollar renewal, hundred year renewal.
Right.
So.
The other thing legal is looking at for us, the board was in agreement to quarterly disbursement of the JED fund for us.
That'd be good.
They're going to check with their legal team to make sure we can do it. The board had no argument to that, they were fine with that. So, Jasmine, we may start seeing quarterly payments out of Talmage, which could help balance books a little more easily for you mid-year.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so, the board approved it upon legal's approval.
There was a reason we did it twice a year, I can't.
There was some language in there that said that we could change it at the board's approval, as long as it didn't create a hardship. And they said there's no hardship for them, they're just sitting on the money.
I think it was because Talmage had to do a lot of it, now they have Rita.
Yeah, Rita, that's what she said, it's, they're just sitting on the money, they would be happy to release it whenever we need it, as long as we can legally do it.
Yeah, because then we can at least make some interest, if, wherever we put it, what account we put it in. Yeah, that'd be a great thing, but it was Talmage in the beginning, it was so simple in the beginning, you know? It's not like it is now.
Right. Other than that, that was, that was pretty much the recap I wanted to give financial update for.
Yeah, you should, when you go to those meetings, you know, they, remember, Talmage is getting half of the money and their, part of their deal is they have to help get these people into the JED. It's not right that some people are paying JED taxes and other people aren't paying JED taxes.
We had some discussion about what the JED should be doing from Talmage's half related to water sewer and some approval projects there. So, there, there was some discussion that we went into. Other questions on the JED? Here in Nunn, then we'll move into zoning, I can now go on. Mike Lad, yours.
Thank you. Permit fees to date, seventy-eight thousand four ninety-two eighty-five. First, before I go into my new business updates, I want to congratulate Mike Kostanski. I've had the privilege of working with Mike over the last eight years. In my thirty-six years of, of work experience in this industry, both private and public, I've not seen anybody so dedicated as an elected official. And I've learned a lot from you being here and.
I've learned a lot from you.
Thank you and.
I'm going to start building bridges.
I wish you, I wish you all the best in, in the future with all your endeavors and, and it's been a privilege, really, Jasmine.
I'll still see you around.
Absolutely.
Thank you, man.
You're welcome. New Oral Surgery Center on State Route forty-three is coming in next to Tamrac between the old Dillons and Tamrac there. We extended the water with our development of those Ryan Homes. The water went in front of this property and made it valuable, so now we're getting a surgery center. They just opened one up in Solon and they came to Brimfield, not so. We're happy to have them there, they're going to be on the BZA for this, this month for consideration.
That is so big.
It's a huge.
When you can get medical facilities.
Medical surgery centers, it's all very good for our JEDs, yeah.
I mean, that whole little area is getting almost medical, you know, across from Bob Evans and.
Oh, yeah, and now with the VA, we're going to try to expand that.
With all these people getting old.
Yeah. I've got several items for board approval this morning. The first one is, we had public hearings this morning. The first one is approval is needed for the proposed text amendment to section five, ten point oh seven driveways. This is a direct result from Dave Ruthner. Wanted twelve-inch corrugated metal pipe or CMP, HDPE or an approved material by the road superintendent. So, I'm looking for approval of this text amendment.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of this zoning text amendment change.
And I'll second, I'm ready.
So, we got a motion and a second on the floor. Mike, what is our timeframe on approval of these? Because I know there's, there's a, there's a process, right? So.
Yeah, the public hearing, you, you have actually thirty days if you wanted to. You had a public hearing this morning, so you have another thirty days to consider this if you'd like. And then there's a thirty-day cooling off period for the law, so once you guys vote with the motion, it doesn't take effect for thirty days.
And can changes be made in that thirty-day timeframe during the cooling off?
Uh, no, but people can challenge it and take it to, you know, appeal it to the, the court of comment, please.
And so, this motion would change section five, ten point oh seven driveways. So, this is just residential driveways and non-subdevelopments, correct?
Correct, and, and we clarified that because in red as well, you got the chapter six, the design specifications for apartments, multifamily residence and non-residential use driveway and parking requirements, that, that would still follow the codes. This is, you know, this twelve-inch pipe is basically if you're, you're building on two, three acres and you have a ditch in front, the minimum pipe size is twelve-inch.
And what is it right now?
There isn't any.
So, just whatever. So, Dave, you want to see this at twelve inches?
Yeah, it, it's going to be one of them, very on the spot too, because I mean, you got to have proper coverage. So, say if it is a small ditch, you might not make it do a twelve because you won't have enough cover. It's just to make sure people don't destroy a driveway and block the ditch off and leave.
So, it gives us some authority to fix any of those blockages that's with the new driveways? And this would just be new properties going forward or would it be retroactive to exist?
It is not retroactive.
But if their pipes would collapse, they'd have to put it in the new way, right?
They'd have to do it in the new way, correct.
So, then this, this twelve inches then on this pipe, does that meet the requirements of the county?
Well, the county subdivision regulations would kick in if you're doing new houses with a subdivision. This, this wouldn't follow that, there is no law on township roads for this corporate size right now, so. As, as lead, some kind of a standard.
Okay.
What about, let's take the one subdivision that's back behind the ice cream place. They have the open dishes back that we were just working on, Dave, you know what I'm talking about?
Portage Commons.
Portage Commons, so if a Portage Commons type development came in, would this kick in or would road subdivisions?
No, because it's a, it's a planted subdivision, it would follow the subdivision rights for the county.
Even though they have ditches?
Even though they have ditches.
I don't see, I, I'm supportive of this. I see this as something that, Dave, you're requesting to make the dishes easier to maintain for us.
With property assets.
Okay. Any other questions on this? All right, roll call for approval.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Next item I have is approval is needed for the proposed text amendments to section three eleven point oh two B and appendix E to add uses that are included in section three eleven point oh one purpose, but not in section three eleven point oh two uses or appendix E and to add the currently listed section three ten point oh two B that are not listed in appendix E. Sounds complicated, but it's kind of very basic. Let me explain. When you read the purpose of the code section for integrated commercial, it specifically specifies this district is intended to serve the commercial needs of the community and our region and provide businesses and professional office facilities, hotel convention centers and conference centers, as well as high-density residential developments. Makes sense, right? But then you go into the code for the uses, none of those, those uses are listed. So, we want to take the, the purpose and the sections of the purpose and put it into the uses, because legally we could be challenged in this down the line. So, this is a housekeeping matter and, and just makes common sense.
Someone want to make a motion on this one?
I'll make it.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, discussion? So, this will add additional locations in which hotels could come in, because now they just go from highway commercial to also integrated commercial. But integrated commercial, they're permitted instead of conditional, meaning they don't need the conditional approval to come in, is that correct?
Um, as far as highway commercial?
Yeah, so highway commercial shows that hotels are conditional.
Highway commercial would be conditional for apartments and I believe this would be conditional as well.
For apart, it's about hotels.
Yeah, hotels, all of that would still be conditional where they'd have to go in front of the board of zoning appeals and it would require any kind of conditions that the board would put on those.
But it's listed here in the, the grid as a P.
Okay.
So, that's why.
You're talking about highway commercial or integrated, I'm sorry?
In, in, in integrated commercial, it would be permitted.
Correct, because that's the purpose and the intent of the code.
So, they no longer have to go before BZA?
It wouldn't have had to go for a BZA for integrated anyway.
And where, where are zones that are integrated commercial right now?
Uh, State Route forty-three is the primary one and then you have all of Route eighteen by all these Meyer Menards, Walmart Cascades, that's all integrated commercial. And then State Route forty-three from, from the, would be Sanctuary Drive and then going north.
I guess my concern with this is, I know there's a lot of talk about the hotel, there's a lot of talk about hotels in, in development. I'd really like to have this one, I'd like to table this vote till after the first of the year to see if there's going to be some changes or things sent back to zoning commission for review. That's my opinion on this. I know that, we say it's just the intent of the industrial integrated commercial, but I, I think we at least consider this or table this till the next meeting for some more discussion time. See you, Mike, that's.
I don't know. You guys want to table it, I mean, I'm going to be there, so. You guys are going to have to make decisions on your own, so.
Well, the, the zoning commission has studied this project in depth and I would like to see a vote given on it today, because the zoning commission only meets once a month and to delay this another month or even two months is not, to me, is not good business practice for those people that are interested in, in doing any projects within the, that would fall under these conditions.
So, Nick, your big concern is the hotels?
So, we're just, yeah, I think the concern is, is hotels, it also adds convention centers down to forty-three. Right now, the code is kind of vague on that and I think that we need to relook at where, how we want development to happen in the community.
Well, the zoning commission themselves is made up of seven residents of Brimfield and they have, they do this because of their love for Brimfield. And I do attend most of those meetings just as a resident, not as a trustee. I have no input into these meetings and I put a lot of faith into these people. They're business people, very educated, good backgrounds and all of them have different backgrounds to put their, their point of view into these things. And again, the township board does not have any authority over these boards. They work independently of this township board. So, seven heads and expertise gone into this, I still would like to go ahead and, and take a vote on this today and be done with it.
Now, Mike, did this come from the, the board?
It's came from legal.
From legal?
Yeah, so, as Mark and I were going through the code, we read the integrated commercial, because there was actually a hotel looking, the one that's actually in the highway commercial right now, it's that Hilton that just got approved. They're in highway commercial, but as we looked into this and I told Mark, I said, hey, if they apply in the integrated commercial, where do I put them as permitted or, or as conditional? Because there's no section in there, but it, it's in the section of three eleven point oh one, which is the purpose. And he says, hey, it's in the purpose, so you have to allow for it. And then if it, if they do apply, in fact, we have one currently looking in the integrated commercial. There's a hotel looking between Kohl's and Lowe's right now. That's supposed to be a Marriott and it's supposed to be following the VA centers. That questionnaire is out there, so I'm going to need legal interpretation of, do I do it as a conditional or a permitted use? Because it's not listed which one it is. So, Mark asked that we do put it in there. You guys could change that, if you don't like it in the permitted use, could change it to conditional use, but as of right now, we'll get challenged on this because it's part of the intent and the purpose of the code. You know, so, I hate to go down that legal road with them, but I, I know there's money invested and if you, if you take it out of the code right now, you, you would have to almost grandfather the application that's currently in process, otherwise you'll be legally challenged on changing the code while somebody's coming in.
Okay.
Which never works out right.
Yeah, I understand now, okay.
And I, I mean, I'd like some more, at least another two weeks. And I, I mean, I'd like some more, at least another two weeks to review this, because I'd like to look at conditional versus permitted too. I think conditional gives us a little more.
Sure.
That's your choice.
So right now on the floor, there's a motion to accept it as presented. I'm gonna make a motion to table it for two weeks. Is there a second out there to table?
Nope.
Alright, that motion gets no second, so that'll be noted in the meeting minutes. Um, reverts back to the original motion to approve as presented. Any further discussion? A roll call?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
No.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Approval is needed, uh, once again, I have a, these are, so the next, the next ones you see, these were court cases that I took back in twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. You have already approved these court cases to go to the prosecutor's office for follow-up and, and either mediation or court. Um, for one reason or another, with the prosecutor's office, this, this was very, either lax or fell through the, the crack holes with the, with their office. And with Heaven in, um, she looked, I gave her the motion number. She goes, these are all stale. These have been, you know, four plus years waiting for court. So she said, I want new approvals on every single one of them that was there. And she wants to send letters out and start court cases immediately, which is, which is good. So the first one I have is approval is needed to send thirteen ten Brookdale Lane to the prosecutor's office in regards to outstanding zoning, zoning violations. As you're going into Beach Crest, if you're along state route forty-three and you look in the backyard, this one is loaded with all kinds of equipment, mainly lawn mowers and junk and debris, and it's been that way for years. So, um, we're looking to get that cleaned up.
I would like to make that motion that we prepare this and update our, our records with the prosecutor's office on this property. And renew it.
A second, Sue?
Any discussion? So this is for the equipment in the backyard?
It's in front and back, but mainly, mainly in the backyard.
Alright, roll call?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Approval is needed to send eleven seventy-eight Sandy Lake Road to the prosecutor's office in regards to outstanding zoning violations. This is on Sandy Lake Road. She used to have chickens in the front yard. Um, and I know she was selling eggs and, and things of that nature. The grass is not cut. We don't have a, a code within, um, you know, for grass cutting, but she's on less than three acres and she does have farm animals. And, um, it's, it's a mess, you know, besides that. So we're looking to get that property cleaned up.
I'd like to make that motion that we, we knew, renew with the prosecutor's office to pursue this property.
A second.
Any discussion on this one? Roll call?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thanks. Approval is needed to send three five three three Sunny Brook Road to the prosecutor's office in regards to zoning violations. This one on Sunny Brook is old trucks. It's up near, um, Old Forge there and, and it's just old trucks and equipment for years sitting there. And we'd like to get that cleaned up.
And I would make that motion that we, we pursue renewing with the prosecutor's office on these violations.
A second.
Any discussion? There you go, roll call?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Approval is needed to send fifteen fifteen Queenstown Road to the prosecutor's office in regards to outstanding zoning violations. There was a permit issued for a fence in a front yard here. It's a four foot fence. It was neighbor dispute going through the years. Um, she was approved to put a, a fence a four foot in the front yard, but it has to have a fifty percent opacity. And that's basically for, you know, safety reasons. And they did not abide by that. They put a solid fence in the front and the neighbor was complaining on that. So they have to, basically, it's a board on board, they just have to take every other board out. But they refused to do that, so we need to send that to the prosecutor's office.
Before we make a motion on this one, Mike, I got an email from the prosecutor's office that they sent this letter already on this.
They have, but they still wanted a clean.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. They sent that over to us.
No, they, they've been doing very good with sending out stuff, so I appreciate that.
Yep.
And again, I would make that motion.
And again, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, lastly, it's not on here, but I, I'm gonna welcome everybody to come to the zoning commission tomorrow night at seven o'clock. We are working and starting on the comp plan. And, you know, this is a future Brimfield to take you out to two thousand and fifty. We've updated this. This is our third time we're updating this plan. But, uh, this is, this is how, what shapes the growth and the development of the community. So, um, we, we'd like your, your input and everybody that can come. We, we want to hear from everybody, so. That concludes my report.
Do we have any questions for zoning? There you go, move into road department. Dave, floor is yours.
Alrighty, uh, just a few things. Uh, we've had a few snow events. Uh, we plowed one time. That's where number two comes in. We had to do a little work on some trucks. A few plows, glue, hydrocoses, that kind of stuff. Uh, nothing major. Everything's on the road again now. Uh, we've used between a hundred and a hundred and fifty ton of salt so far this season. Uh, some new business. I ordered another two hundred ton of salt. Well, by the time I wrote this up, I already got the salt in. So we have two hundred tons more in the building. Uh, we've ordered some parts from Glen Hill, which is gonna take three to four weeks to get the parts in for the trucks. Just mainly spare stuff where we don't fall behind on hoses and everything. Pickup truck, truck twenty-three, the old, my old truck that has a plow and stuff on it. Uh, there's a couple issues on it, but we're gonna hold off getting it fixed. I did put it on here to get it fixed, but they had to get parts in. It's hard to find some of the parts. Uh, until we get back in some decent weather, it's gonna take up three to five days to get the truck fixed. Uh, then I need a board's approval for the, board's approval for the OPWSC round forty. Approval the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred thousand dollars from the road levy fund twenty-one ninety-five. And that amount will be used to pay the local share of the Sanctuary View Drive paving project.
I will make that motion, Dave.
Second for discussion. So is this just to apply for the?
This is.
Or is this one we was already?
This is moving forward with the project. We made, we made the cut line and stuff. This will be at least Sanctuary View refurbished and everything from the, from the beating of the road that's taken now. The extra traffic of sheets and all the rentals and all that through that area.
And so OPWSC is gonna pay fifty percent on that project?
Yes. The project in total is two hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. So this will be our local share of the half.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions on this?
Nope.
Jasmine, are we good for this for next year?
Yes, we should be good. Yep.
Alright, roll call?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Hey, Dave, I know I don't have a vote in any of this anymore, but Kevin's out there. And, uh, I would, you know, I know you're gonna be setting up, uh, people that are, you know, liaisons. I would like, it would really be great if somehow Kevin could work with you. Two farmers and, uh, yeah, I really want to see Dave get a building built, you know? It just, it has to be done. We tried and I know money wasn't where it should be, but Dave's watched his budget pretty well. You guys really, you need to get him a building. I like Kevin's building. Now, if you could talk to my wife so I could build one like that. So, that's just my thoughts. So.
Uh, just, just a couple of little things. Uh, like tonight, this is all gonna switch back to snow, ice. We're gonna let it ride out for a little while and then we'll hit it with salt tonight. And we'll probably have to be back out first thing again tomorrow with salt. Just to let the public kind of know, we're shooting at them the best we can, but when you get weather like this, it's tough. So, uh, and on another note, Mike, it's been a pleasure working with you all these years.
It's been a lot of years.
Yeah, it's thirteen years.
I'll still, I'll still see you around. You know that.
Yeah, but it's, it's been fun. Uh, well, mostly it's been fun, I should say, but, no, it's been a good time and, uh, I had fun chasing the grain, because I know how that feels.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not far behind you.
Well, you, I know. You really built that road department up. I mean, I can remember back when Steve Gutwiler was here and, gosh. Chick, we had, we had that old, uh, road grader. That one, one time we got it running and took it down to Beach Crest. That was, we should have kept that. That would have been a classic display in front of the town hall.
The problem is the amount of money to retire, everything to get it to move to that point would have been.
Well, you knew it was, you knew it was a snowstorm when Chick convinced us to get that thing, brought it back out again. Yeah, yeah. You, you've done a great job, Dave. I don't think we've ever had a road superintendent, you know, since I've been here like you, so. Just keep hanging there.
Well, we're working on it.
Families first, remember. I told you, family vacation.
Yeah, well, one of these days, I'll get to them.
You need to take your vacation. How many times have I told you that?
You've told me. I've taken one or two.
I know, you need to leave your phone at home.
Uh, that does work because paving season this season, it never works out. Uh, then one other thing, uh, Cassie, it's been fun working with you too. Had a good time. Taught me a lot about parks and I didn't really want to know, but you still teach me a lot. But again, it's, it's been a pleasure working with you too, so. And that's all I got.
Any special prayers? There you go. Cassie, floor is yours.
Alright, um, I just wanted to start by thanking Mike as well. Thank you for all you've done for parks. Um, thank you for helping to hire the parks assistant, helping with Brimfest, um, performing with American Steel. Um, unforgettable performances. I'll never forget them. Thank you so much. Um, Mike's Place sponsoring all of our crazy hot dog eating contests and Tour of Lights and all those things. Thank you. Thank you for all that over the years. I really appreciate it.
You did a great job. I mean, you turned our parks into something. I hope they, they build on it.
Yeah, yeah. And thank you to the board. Um, today is my last meeting as well, so thank you for everything you've done. Um, special shout out to zoning. Thank you, Mike, for getting Messner acre, uh, Messner Acres, Maguire Park. Uh, helping with that and helping with the Parks District and, um, Dave, thank you for letting me boss you around for the last almost seven years and.
Of course you tried.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's been a privilege working with you, um, your knowledge of the parks and, and all this stuff. I, I want to say that you're gonna be truly missed here. Yeah, it's, uh, I've seen the, the talent you have and I, I wish you the best of luck in your endeavors.
Thank you. Yeah, and yeah, thank you to the board. Thank you to all the departments for helping out over the years. I appreciate it.
You've done great.
Um, with that, I didn't have too many other updates. Um, the Tour of Lights Holiday Lighting Contest will continue. Um, thank you to Nick for stepping in to help, uh, finish that out. Uh, the voting period for that is going to start on Friday, so I will give it all, um, get the voting all set up on the website and everything ready to go. Um, so Nick has volunteered to, um, help finish that and announce the winners and get the prizes out to them, so. Um, whoops, sorry. Um, so I'll be putting those signs out this week and posting the maps and the voting intro before my last day, which will be Friday. Um, and then also, um, Mike, Lad and I attended, um, the final presentations at Kent State University. Um, I was partnering with the GIS class. They were doing a trail mapping project this semester for Maguire Park. Um, they created some really great presentations. Um, I meant to put those in teams for you guys, but there was an issue with the files, um, being sent over. So those will be in teams for you to review. Um, Mike, please, uh, make sure that those get seen by everybody.
Yeah, they're, they're fantastic and, and they're, you know, I'd like them to, to come and, and give this to the board and let you guys see the different plans that they came up with the park at, at minimal cost. Uh, Cassie went over there and, and I gotta tell you, you know, thank you for doing that. This would cost us a fortune if we had a company doing this for us. Uh, she spearheaded this and Kent State was more than welcome to, to put this on and give it to the students. And they came up with, well, about what, five different plans?
Yep.
And each plan that was fantastic, but some stand out and, you know, maybe the board will want to take a bit in peace out of one and, and another. Um, but I think those plans for the park, uh, were, with the minimal cost were fantastic. So, yeah, definitely need to bring them here and, and have them put it on here.
Yeah, I'd be interested in inviting them to an upcoming board meeting, next one or one in January.
Yeah, they're very, they're very talented. Yeah, it's very talented and, and their, their plans were great. Things that we wouldn't normally think of, so.
Well, it gives them opportunity to kind of do a public presentation instead of just an academic piece too, so.
Absolutely, and everybody was, you know, they were, they were, all fell in love with the park. They did all the, the trails and, um, you know, their, their heart was in it. They, they couldn't wait to go back out there and, you know, survey it and it was nice.
I think they loved the overlook the best. I think every presentation mentioned that little overlook that you could see the whole park and, um, they mentioned putting benches and things up there. It's a highlight, so. Yeah, they really, they went, they spent the entire semester going out there and visiting and mapping and, uh, using GIS, uh, software to, um, learn how to use GIS, but also appreciating. And they're all from different backgrounds too. There was planning and ecological backgrounds and architecture, so it was interesting to see their different perspectives, so. All those will be available to you. And then we also have the contact information from the professor and all of the students. So if there was a plan you wanted to enact or, um, you want to send them thank yous or anything like that, we have that information.
Will they be able to put these online on the Brimfield page?
Yeah, I'm sure they can.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I just hope somebody in the next board, you know, you keep promoting this partnership with Kent State, because that is such an asset. And you've got young kids just wanting to get involved and, and I'm glad that you, you've made that bridge between us and Kent State.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, you know, we, we just don't have enough funds for what we should be doing, but at least you're helping these kids out.
Yeah, and Professor Widener, um, said that she was so happy they had a real, uh, project. They were making a real public impact with what they were doing rather than just doing a theoretical, you know, mapping a national park they might never visit or something like that. Um, so they like having real world impact, so if there's any other GIS projects or anything you could think of, I mean, there's a million.
Yeah, what about Messner Acres?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Any, doesn't even have to be trails, even if it was something related to fire. You want to map out all the hydrants in the area, anything with roads, you want to map out culvert pipes or anything like that, like those are applications you could use. And they enjoy doing it, so.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And, uh, like I said, my last day is Friday, so if you need anything from me, it should be before four o'clock on Friday. And that's all.
Cassie, thank you for your service in the community and all the work you've done for parks and the programs. Appreciate you. Have the best luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for parks? There you go. We'll move into information technology. Looks like, uh, Joe, you're on vacation coming up here soon?
Yes, so I have two upcoming vacations tomorrow. Um, I will be taking a day off. I'm actually gonna be assisting. Um, so I, I, one of the other things I do is I'm part of the Portage County EMA communication team. Um, they had been asked to participate in a Department of Homeland Security, uh, drill that's gonna be conducted statewide tomorrow. Uh, the drill is actually gonna be a total loss of communication, so they're gonna replicate the loss of telephone, internet and the Marx radio system. So the, the, the drill is to see how the county will communicate if we were to lose, uh, you know, all modern communications. So our team will help with communication between, um, the sheriff's office, the county commissioners, uh, and, uh, the appropriate departments on Columbus. So it's a, to see what would happen, make sure that we have everything in place to continue, uh, proper communications in the event of a, you know, internet, telephone and Marx radio system outage. So that'll be a fun, uh, drill to be a member of. And then, um, the first, first full week of January, so the week of the fourth, um, I'll be on a family vacation and out of country. So, right now, we don't have a backup for live streaming, so I don't know if we'll be able to, what will, or our plan will be for those. I know we have an organizational meeting and a scheduling meeting, um, traditionally, um, for the first part of the year. So I, we'll have to make a plan for that.
Okay. Yeah, we can talk about that.
There's no such a thing. If he's taking a day of vacation to do that, that would be, to me, that would just be an extension of him looking to network Brimfield.
Well, but is it a role and responsibility of Brimfield or is it just a personal project? I guess is what I would ask.
Um, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't have him take a vacation, Dave. I was just, so I didn't pay him to do the work. For here for what he's doing. He didn't.
But the LIPC, is that an extension of the work here or is that a, a side project, volunteerism thing you do? But the LIPC, is that an extension of the work here or is that a, a side project, volunteerism thing you do?
I mean, yeah, I don't, to be fair, as you said, I don't know if it would be a direct extension of, of my role here. It is something that I do outside of the township. Um, it is something I became aware of as part of, uh, this role, but it is not directly connected to my role. Um, I, I, I think the information I learned may be helpful to the township, but no, it is, it is a separate piece.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Who's the follow?
Any questions for Ito? There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cemetery, I believe we have one deed we signed.
Yes, yep.
Any other news in San Francisco?
No, not just.
Then we'll move into fiscal. You guys will.
All right, um, for new business, I just have some updates and notices. Um, I've been working on year end prep, trying to get that, uh, underway. I am asking that all departments, um, wrap up spending as much as they can and close out any POs that will not be used in 2025. Um, I don't anticipate carrying over any POs unless, um, absolutely need to. Any lingering and unpaid invoices, please turn them in so we can get them paid or at the very least budgeted for the beginning of 2026. And I am currently finishing up the last department's budget, which is roads, and doing a final glance at all of the, of the departments. And for the next meeting, I will be requesting a couple motions, um, to set temporary appropriations for 2026 and one for health benefits for newly and re-elected officials if they so choose to elect to enroll in those. Um, but that's all I have for fiscal, and congrats, Mike, on your retirement. It was a pleasure working with you.
Congrats on your election.
Thank you.
Don't go 24 years.
I won't, trust me, I won't.
Thank you. Hey, I got one question. We just got, you know, the one thing I really worry about, because, you know, Nick brought, you know, a good point about the hotels and stuff. I know we got some hotels just, they just won't, you know, you know what I mean, where they keep the full bed tax.
Well, actually, um, we have, we're, they've been, they have caught up. They're, they're about a month behind, so I'll stay on top of that.
Good.
Even if I got to go knock on some doors.
Yeah, right. Well, ta, take a cop with you. It just, uh, you know, because, uh, you know, there is that, that penalty that we have in there that's available to use.
Yeah, I think, I think Sue mentioned that, was it like a da, like a day, is it with a daily?
Per, per day.
Like if they were late?
Yeah, per day there. There's a res, if you could, maybe look up that resolution because, unfortunately, there's just, uh, two or three hotels that cause us the same problem, the degree. And, and what they're doing, they're just taking the bed tax and using it to, it's not fair. Not fair to the hotels that do pay their stuff diligently. And if we do have to put up with problems, hotels, it'd be nice to know that we're at least getting that bed tax in.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm very glad to hear that you're at least knocking on some doors.
Yeah, I'm trying to stay on top of things.
Good. That'll help you in the long run. Maybe you could direct all that money to the general fund. Because you got, you got to get some money put in that.
We do.
General fund, so you don't have to go through this reoccurring nightmare every, twice a year.
That's true.
You know?
That is true.
Okay, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
When these hotels that don't send out six percent in, is where the, where the keepers of the money in the pool that comes in. Um, is there such a thing that those that aren't late over a certain period of time, that there would be any kind of a retroactive recap or some way that when they're behind you, they can catch up? Might want to have Heaven take a look at that and see.
Yeah, that's something I, I could reach out to her about. But as you know, all this is new for me, so I'm learning too.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm learning too.
I thought you'd have it all figured out in a month.
Yeah, that completes fiscal.
Any other questions for fiscal?
My crust.
Here in the bud, we do have an executive session today. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to higher revised code, section 121, 122G, for the purposes of considering the following manners. Uh, number four, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employees. Do you need a second?
I can second.
And we'll have, this is police.
Yeah.
So the police, the board trustees, the fiscal officer.
Yeah, I don't necessarily need fiscal.
Oh, you don't need fiscal, okay, just Cory. Uh, then, can we have Kevin come in too?
It's your, it's your session.
Make sure you're good?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, Kevin, we'll have you in there also.
You guys will call me if I'm not there.
It's, the answer to you.
You guys made a decision. You got some big, can you, any job today?
You got a motion and a second on the floor to be approved?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, we need executive session at nine oh five.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your attendance.
All right, welcome everyone, we are back from executive session. During executive session, we had a discussion on a memorandum of understanding between Brimfield Township and the Paternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council. It's my recommendation and my motion that we move forward with the memorandum of understanding between Brimfield Township and the Ohio Paternal Order of Police. This is to address an issue in the CBA Article thirty-one about returning service leave to an employee after they've been out on medical leave. Recommendation is they burn some sick time and vacation time related to a workplace injury, so we'll refill those banks for them as part of this CBA. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve this memorandum of understanding.
Uh huh.
All right. Roy, you're good with this, and we consulted with legal on this, and our insurance provider, and they said this is the best route for the township and the officer.
Yes. That's correct.
It just makes sense, they were off on work leave. Any further questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Roll call.
Sue?
Yes.
My, Nick, I mean.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Anything for the good of the order, Sue?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. All right, if not, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Now, second roll call.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Reading and adjourned, nine thirty-three, everyone have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.